Called a meeting to the order of Silver Falls School District. Attendants were missing. Tom Hood contacted me and he's mechanical emergency out in the place late this afternoon. It's gotta be taken care of. So, he won't be here, otherwise everybody else is here. And first item we have on workshop agenda is a policy team update.
Yeah, so we were talking last time when we had the board, the regular board meeting about how you all wanted to process policy. And so I was just gonna get some feedback from you on how you would like me to do that. And there's a, there's a bunch of different ways that can happen. So, we could form a team in the district. And I usually include a high school administrator because of the amount of sports and activity things that are in policy. And then, you know, a board member or two. We could even do some community members. So, it's just open for discussion. Sometimes the superintendent just puts things your way and you look at them and then you, you know, say, oh, that looks good. Or could we change this? Or, you know, so there's a variety of ways you could do it. The policy is really important in the district because it really guides our practice. And so, getting those things just right. There's a huge update that I'm working on for the district that I'll have in the August board packet. And on this particular update, I've been kind of flying solo. The district office, except for Mr. Palmer, who's been hanging out with me, is pretty bare bones at this point. So, the assistant superintendent's not on board yet. And so, I'm trying to get that ready for the August board meeting. But it may be something that I have to send to you in advance to have you just take a peek at it. OSBA sends us updates usually, they kind of coincide with legislative session. So, usually after the February short session, if there are any changes, they send us those. And then later in the year, you know, whenever they have laws that are changed or updated, they, they go through and they update their policy to reflect those changes. And so, we get updates a couple times a year. The last one was huge. It was two, it was a huge two-page summary, which is very unusual. It was an incredible amount of updates. Some, some updates are just simple things, clerical, change of a word here and there. Like the, OSB has quit using shawl so much. They got rid of shawl. So, a lot of the policy updates are just things like that. But sometimes they're important updates, like policy KGBB, which was the concealed weapons policy that came out this year. So, it's really up for you to discuss at this work session and kind of tell me what you think is best for us.
Well, I know we had a policy work group in the past. And, you know, that did have, we did have some community members on that. I thought the format worked well. And the fact that, you know, we, we had, I think, community members and administration. Can't remember if we had a principal or not on that. But I thought they did a good job of helping the pre-screen, get multiple different perspectives on the policies at hand. And would help us kind of have a Reader's Digest overview of the why behind it from like an ORS or legislative policy that dictated it. And then would bring it to us at a board meeting. And we would get it well in advance as well with our packet so we could read through the full policy multiple times. But I thought it was extremely helpful to help, especially if there was a, at that time, we had a large backup coming out of COVID and getting back to in-person meetings. And we had just an immense amount of policy updates and that time was extremely helpful.
Yeah.
So, something along that lines, I think, would be helpful and good. At least in my opinion, because I think it helps us get multiple eyes on it as well as our board. And it also helps us work through, especially if we have a large amount of them in an expeditious fashion.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Same, I think the addition of the high school principal is a really smart idea because so many of those high level policies deal with high school. So, yeah, sounds good to me.
What's been your previous experience of what you've worked with as far as a makeup of a team on that?
Yeah, I've done it a couple different ways. So, in my last superintendency, we had a small team that would get together. But sometimes the team would vary a little bit. So, for instance, we did a desk audit with OSBA, which is where they go through every policy in the district. And that costs about $12,000. Well, when we got to the fiscal section, which is section D, I brought the business manager in. So, it would kind of depend, you know, who's in the room, like personnel would bring HR in. So, it kind of depends on, you know, what policies you're looking at. So, if you had a difficult one that was HR-related, like you might want Marissa. You might, you know, want the assistant superintendent to help with that. And he, Tony has a really good background in policy. So, he'd probably be a good person to serve on that team with me. So, I think your team approach is a great idea. I've also just done updates on my own. So, you know, like when it's little stuff. And just say, you know, this is kind of just a sign off on a language update that is not, doesn't, doesn't impact the importance or the, you know, the meaning of the policy. It's just a simple clerical thing. So, it kind of depends, I mean, but you can run those through the policy group and those are just easy check offs. You know, I mean, you can do it both ways. And sometimes you might add somebody to the policy. Like if it's an athletic policy, you definitely want the athletic director to weigh in on that. So, it kind of takes a little nuanced work to kind of see who should be present in the room to make sure we have the right voices heard.
Sounds like a way to go, I mean, a possibility would be to have a, a core of, say, a board member or something and yourself or, and a, as you talked, having a principal and probably the high school principal. And then, from that point, depending on what the policy deals with, kind of an ongoing on and off, bringing in somebody that, off staff that would be pertinent to it or something like that. Or, I suppose, something in policy regards communication or something that the general public, maybe have a person or two in waiting or something from the community, something like that. I don't know, just spitballing here.
Yeah, somebody to weigh in. Yeah, we also will have some community forums in the fall where we talk about the student investment account and some of those grant programs that require us to, you know, update our plan every two years. And so, we have to craft a new plan. And our plan's gonna be dramatically different because of some of the things that have happened in the district. There's some adjustments that need to be made there. So, that might be a good place for community members to maybe weigh in on a piece of policy or something. If we had one that was, that was a, one that the community would want to weigh in on. You know, some of them are, it's pretty just boilerplate, you know, change the, whatever the issue is or the error. But some of those are, they have a real meaning to the community. And I think they're, I think it's important to get their voice and their take on things. You know, as we're, as we're moving into this real era of transparency where, you know, I'm really sharing a lot of things with the community and trying to be really upfront about, you know, everything we're doing in the district office. I think it's good to let them weigh on, in on those types of decisions and give their thought.
Couple of thoughts and questions. I generally like the idea of a policy team that's being proactive, going through systematically, looking at policy and also whatever updates that come through. Question is for maybe some of our more senior board members in the past and for you as well, Kim. As far as like number for like that core group and then, you know, obviously to reach out to subject matter experts, is there appropriate? Do you have an idea of like what a core number would be for that policy team?
I'd say probably five or six people.
Yeah, I think that's what have been in previous iterations here.
Okay. And then as far as presenting back, what, did that format, was that via email? Was that during board meetings or a combination of?
It was like when we had a bunch of policy updates, whether we presented it at a work session or at a regular session, there would be the policy, but they would create like a cover sheet that gave, okay, here's the why behind it. Like, okay, ORS, whatever changed this legislative session, therefore it dictated this. Here's the summary of the change and here's the recommendation of the, of the work group. So, it had like four little bullet point sections that kind of gave the what, the why, the, and what do we think behind it, right? Ultimately, it was our decision as the board, but it was a, it was a nice summary to kind of help kick us off and help us digest what the major changes were. So, that came with every policy, it was like a cover sheet on top that they helped create.
And so, it would come ahead of meetings, just like, yep, just like our normal board packet sometimes. But sometimes Dan would say, there is a lot here, I'm gonna, I'm ready to give this to you now. I'm gonna send it out by email first. And then it would also go, you know, in the board packet.
I always sent those important things out ahead of time. Yeah, if they, if they need discussion or anything of that matter, I always sent those out ahead of time.
Josh, you're on, any input?
No, I just, I think Aaron gave a good summary of, of what we've done in the past. And I think it was by and large a good system.
I think that there was some fine tuning. We ultimately ended up with, like, we would get the OSBA recommended policy language, our old policy language, and then a combo document that had like the strike throughs and the, the changes. And so, I think that's what we finally landed on. Because there was a little confusion at first, like, well, which is the one? And where are these changes coming from? But, and Debbie is familiar with that, so.
Yeah, it was like.
Yeah, we always use the strike through.
The strike through and then we get a clean copy at the end to kind of show what the new. So, it was like current, like recommendations, strike throughs, and then clean copy of revised.
There was also the highlighted yellow section of all the new verbiage added.
New language was highlighted, yeah.
Yeah, new language is highlighted. And they also include a summary, OSBA does with the policy updates. And I usually, on the second reading, I usually have the clean copies. So, what, you know, we've gone through the first reading. So, I'm assuming you did a first and a second reading.
Right.
Yeah. And then on the second reading, we do the clean copy with, you know, what our choices were and present that.
So, I guess I have a question, because it threw me for a loop a little bit. The, the April policy dump you referenced. The, the OSBA said in April, put out a bunch of policies that we needed to look over. So, my question would be, what's the timeline on that? And when are we gonna get to look at them? Because already my brain's sidetracked on KGBB already.
Yeah, I can send those to you. I, you know, what I did was I went through and I did Winston-Dillars before I left because I didn't want to leave them with that big bunch of policies. So, I've already gone through them. And then I started to do Silver Falls, but then I got a little busy.
Is there, so when OSBA throws us out, I'm assuming there's a requirement, at least to follow all the ARs. But the rest of it, what's our timeline for needing to, as a board, address those or not address those?
Well, I try and do them as quickly as they come out, but I don't know what the actual requirement is, Josh, but I'll check for you. I'll see what they're, no one's ever said to me, oh, you have to do this, you know, the next board meeting. The amount that they sent us, they, I mean, it's almost like you need to split them in two. It's that many. It's a huge update. So, I will check and see what their timeframe is for that.
I think that usually there is not really a date unless it's a legislative thing.
Which are ARs, right?
Um, not necessarily, no. But the, what was that one? We had a policy that Oregon said thou shalt adopt, which is kind of strange because if we're supposed to be an independent school board, you know, and we adopted it. And that had a timeline, like we had to do it by a certain date.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, some of them, the ORSes, they come with attachment of by such and such date.
Yes. Every Student Matters was one of the policies that we had, yeah. That we had a deadline on and they said you shall have it in by February, you know, the end of February. I don't remember what year it was, 2022. I will tell you that the difference between a policy, so policy requires board action and board approval. An AR is the administrative rule that, that is how the district implements that policy. So, ARs do not require board approval. So, if we had an AR that had a huge error in it, like we had a huge error in one of our ARs in Winston, we fixed it because it was, it was really written in a way that wasn't, wasn't great for the district. So, we fixed that. So, you know, we can, we can adjust an AR without board action. Except there's like, there's eight different ARs that are governed by federal law. And on those eight, and I'd have to look at my list to see which ones they are, those do require board action. So, there's a little tiny group that does, but the majority of them do not.
And what has happened in recent past with ARs is that we've been presented with them just as a courtesy so that the public knows that that's been changed.
Information.
Yeah, they give us a template, yeah, OSBA gives it a template. I always include it in my update as well. But it doesn't, like, it doesn't require you usually to choose language or, but the, but the policy team would. So, the policy team would look at the AR, the accompanying AR, and say, well, we just need to match this, we need to do this. So, that would also be a function of the policy team. And then if it was, if it was something that was really controversial, then we'd want to get some feedback from people. More people.
Any other input that we want to give Kim on this as far as setting it up?
I guess, well, I guess for me, I would just recommend, I kind of did it on my own, of every policy that kind of has a date associated with it, like just a master list, like a reminder of like, oh, this policy's gonna kick in, it needs to be followed by this date. I don't know if there's like a way to do that, like a calendar or a master schedule, like, oh, by the way, some of these things probably need to be done by certain dates that we historically haven't been doing. So, like, like a reminder on a phone.
Things that are, like, due dates that are referenced within policy, not, yeah. There are some things that, and they vary from district to district. So, for instance, I worked in a district before that had a large high school in it with a foreign exchange program. And our date for accepting kids in the program was the end of May. Well, our date here is much different. So, I mean, those things vary a little bit. And you, you know, you're following state law, but there's some flexibility in there. So, like Division 22 standards, those are supposed to be presented to the board in November. And so, you know, in our November meeting, we'll go through the Division 22 standards and I'll talk about those. So, yeah, there, I, I'll, I'll see if Leslie Fisher from OSBA, Josh, can give me a list of which policies include deadlines that impact districts?
And I could just give you the ones that I got already.
Okay.
Just like here.
Yeah.
And I think we have, you know, if, you know, in the past, especially the last few years, you know, especially coming out of COVID, we had a large onslaught. That's why we put the, you know, the, the policy work group into place, you know, three or four years ago. Three years ago, I think. We worked through a huge amount of policies that needed to be updated and we got caught up. And like Kim said, of course, you know, things change. And after the February session, a whole bolus get released again. So, I do, I do believe that we've done what we can do as best we can to stay on top of the policies since, you know, since, you know, since we got caught up a few years ago. So, that, that has been good. But, but yeah, just always keep it on the front radar. But yeah, like, we have a, again, a large bolus coming out of the last legislative session. So, we'll need to catch up on that.
And that might be some guidance we can specifically give to the policy team to like go through and figure out deadlines and structure in such a way where they're doing kind of, like, with policy teams. You kind of have two different roles. Like, one is the stuff that's coming in and then two, also systematically going through and reviewing existing policy that maybe OSB hasn't, you know, specifically got to. But it's, maybe it's been five, six, seven years since we've looked at a specific policy. So, I think that might be something we can assign out specifically.
Well, and some policies are required by OSBA, some are highly recommended. And they have a code at the bottom that tells you that. And then some are optional. So, like, you know, there are some that you don't even have to, you know, I'm required to put into the district. But you might want to if it, if it promotes whatever your practice is or supports whatever your, your, you know, practices.
And one of the things too that, to keep in mind is that this is not a board committee, this is your committee. And so, we don't have really, that's not our, we don't, we don't, we don't direct it, let's just say, say that. But, but Kim can choose to have representatives from the board that she chooses herself, right?
Yeah, I think that's how it would work. I think it would be, yeah, and, and anyone that's interested. I don't know which one of you is interested in that or any of you. But you can just pop me an email or I can write your name down now if you're interested.
I'm interested.
Okay, Josh, okay. Anyone else?
I'm interested as well.
Okay, thank you, Derek.
Okay. Anything else? You good on Kim on that? We're.
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep, we'll be great. We'll, we'll get it all organized and it'll be, it'll be just right.
Procurement process, which has kind of been lacking. Kim?
Yeah, so I think Kim Dowd and I are gonna tackle this a little bit. So, we included the policy for you guys in your packet. So, you thought our district purchasing policy as well as the more complicated bidding requirement. And I don't think we included the AR for that because it has a huge AR that goes with it. So, but I think the most important thing I sent you or is in your packet is the, there is a graphic organizer from OASBO that Kim sent me recently. And that is a guiding document that we're gonna use with administrators. Correct, Kim Dowd?
Oh, there's Kim.
Okay. And I think that that, that document is really, it's an impressive, it's an impressive organizational piece that will really help. And I don't have that in my package.
Which one do you have?
That organizational.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Talking about the guidelines?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I got it. Yeah, okay.
Are you talking about the procurement guidelines, Kim? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I am, I'm talking about this right here, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And so, that is, and I'm gonna let Kim talk about that for a minute because I think it's really, I think it's really important this year since we're really focusing on how to, you know, bring our budget back in line and really be very in tune with how that's gonna work. Kim and I have decided that we want to have more input over, or more oversight over large purchases. And so, we're gonna work with our administrators and teachers and other people in the district to try and really manage that in a way that is very thorough and very methodical. So, Kim, you want to talk about that for a second?
Absolutely. So, yes, the, the flow chart was something we developed out of our business office a couple of years ago. And it needs to be rejuvenated, refreshed in front of our, our administrators, but also with our staff. We have a lot of staff who are department leads or help run programs. And, you know, there are costs that are incurred, there are materials that need to be ordered. And our, our department leads, our teachers, they are the, the ones that know what their programs need. So, we have committed to serving and educating our staff better to, to make sure that these compliance, that these board policies are followed, that we're always in compliance. District purchasing is very clear that no obligation may be incurred by any employee without a purchase order. And that is very difficult when we have what are known as purchasing cards. It's essentially a credit card. Well, it's, it's not always the norm for someone to think that I need to get a purchase order before I swipe a credit card. That is district policy, that is going to be a change. And it's going to, is, it's going to be maybe not the most happy of news for some of our staff because that does mean you are going to need to plan ahead for purchases. But this, you know, these are taxpayer funds and we are responsible for being, you know, the stewards of these taxpayer funds. So, there will be purchase orders required for everything outside of petty cash. So, that will allow us to validate budget authority has been granted or maybe student body funds are available for those purchases before a credit card statement comes through. As well as by providing this flow chart, helps our staff understand what is required at different thresholds of purchasing levels. So, regardless of the funding source, these are public funds. It may be a grant, but it is still public funds. And so, we are going to, depending upon the type of purchase, we are required to potentially have rebids. And we're going to have documentation of that based on the purchasing level. If it's over a certain level, we may have a more formal process that we go out to. And this is to ensure that there is no favoritism amongst vendors, to make sure that we are being the best stewards of our taxpayer dollars, to make sure that we are using what are known as cooperative purchasing agreements whenever possible. That may mean that another state agency has already negotiated a price or a pricing agreement on certain things. So, there are definitely some changes that are coming, coming down. And it's gonna take, you know, the education for, for all staff involved. So, it's very difficult for us to find out after a commitment has been made to purchase something that, you know, well, I already placed the order with the vendor, by the time business finds out about it, you know, that, that is going to be something that is going to be stopped. District policy requires that purchase order to be issued before any order can be made.
Yeah, that is right in the middle of the policy.
I, a district I coached in, they made it very clear to us every year at our coaches meeting, that was the role I played there, that at our coaches meeting, if we purchased anything and didn't have a requisition and a PO first, it was gonna be on us to pay that bill. And they just know if sands are butts, so.
Is there, is there any value in notifying our vendors? I know there's a zillion different vendors possible, but notifying our vendors of what our requirements are?
Those letters have been drafted and are being sent to vendors as well that no orders will be allowed without a purchase order document. Not a purchase order number that somebody uses their initials and makes up a number, right? So, the actual document with our superintendent's signature will be required to be received by the vendor before they can accept an order.
Yeah, any purchase over $2,500 requires my signature. So, it's a significant change. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a very, it's a very methodical process that should ward off any issues, I would think, any unexpected things. Because we need to, we need to, we're so tight, we need to avoid unexpected. We can't have that in our budget right now. It will be a learning curve, but we're gonna, we're gonna try and really, you know, explain it well so that people understand.
All right.
What's the estimated turnaround time? So, if a staff member has a purchase request from time of submitting that through to getting the purchase order, is there a rough ballpark that generally try and get that back to them?
Absolutely. So, our team processes requisitions every day, multiple times a day. The purchase order generation process is typically once a day. However, I will say that, you know, we receive requests all day, every day for, hey, I'm so sorry, but I need this purchase order. And we can turn them around very quickly. There is protections within the system such as, let's say, a specific department. Let's, we'll use our maintenance department. If our maintenance support specialist puts in a requisition to purchase something, it goes from per entry to our facilities director for review and approval, to our business team for review and approval. And then if, over a certain dollar threshold, to the superintendent for review and approval. So, there are processes in place that do take time. And this will require a mindset change of planning ahead, knowing your expenses for your programs and your projects. And then knowing that there, we absolutely know there's exceptions to the rule. There will be things such as, we call them blanket purchase orders, where we may have an existing approval to, for up to, we'll call it a $10,000 order with one of our janitorial supply companies. We're not going to, every time we need to order toilet tissue, have, have that. But that, that purchase order would be exhausted and a new one would need to be generated. The same would go for, let's say, we have a facilities breakdown in one of our, we're not, we're not going to, we're going to have systems in place for our facilities team to go buy a piece of pipe and stop the water from flowing into the, you know, into a room. We're not going to have, you know, unrealistic barriers. But, but we do know we are going to have maintenance and repairs. So, we will have pre-authorized expenses to a not-to-exceed amount with certain vendors and knowing that it follows district purchasing guidelines.
Thank you.
And then any large purchases, you know, would need to go through an RFP process. And so, you have the verbiage on that. And, and the procurement guidelines tell you when you need to do that. And it kind of varies depending on what it is, whether it's a small, intermediate, or formal type of process. And if it's a goods and trade services or, you know, architect services, I mean, they're a little bit different. But that, that procurement guideline is a really good, good guideline for you to follow. So, for instance, when I was curriculum director in Dallas, you know, I, I would do a requisition for a curriculum purchase and it would go through the business office. It would take a couple of days, maybe three days. And then we, you know, we, we would do an RFP if it was large enough. So, if it, if it needed an RFP, I'd have to have three different bids. So, I'd have to have different bids. So I'd have to have different bids from different vendors. And the vendors understand that, you know, at times, maybe, maybe they didn't, they weren't the low bid, but they, they're good about giving us the estimate we need to carry on. So they understand our process. So that is, that is a normal practice. And the practice that Kim's talking about, about, you know, always having a requisition, always having a PO, like Phil said, that is a normal practice. That's not, that's not abnormal at all. It's just that we just need to really be strict about following it so that we don't have any surprises.
I have quite a few questions if, but I don't want to take anybody's time unless they want to go first.
Go ahead.
So I'm trying to understand the $150,000 amount and what that means to us. So when does something come to the board specifically? When it needs board approval and not just superintendent approval? Is there anything?
So normally it would be a pretty high threshold, right, like what's in the policy. But in, in our particular instance, and to, to be transparent and to increase public awareness of how, how the district functions, we're going to run larger purchases by you. And they do that in some districts. You know, I've worked in a district where small purchases like 10,000 and over were run by the board. And then I've worked in other districts where they don't run anything by the board unless it hits that larger threshold. But I think in this particular case, because we're trying to be so transparent and trying to really talk about how we move forward and to get, to regain trust with our community, I think it's important that we, that we run some of those things by you. We don't have to, we're not required to. But I think, I think it's good practice just to show good faith that we want to be open with the community.
And our, our policy now, Josh, is that the, the superintendent's authorized to enter into contracts up to $150,000 without board approval.
Correct.
Correct.
But after that.
Any dollar after that, they would, she would be obligated to get board approval.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just was looking at the language and it didn't really, wasn't really clear that that's how it would work.
That is how it works. Yeah, it's a hundred, that threshold is, oh, that's correct, it's $150,000.
Yeah. And then the other questions I have, and I know that, I can't imagine how much work you have on your plate, Ms. Kim Kelson. The service contracts, like how often do we review our vendor service contracts? Because some of them are like probably a three-year, a five-year. And it looks like there needs to be some competitive bids at time to, by the policies here to, let's just throw like, say, Microsoft Word out there and like a word processor. Like are we supposed to, we would never go away from, but this is probably a bad example. How do we know that like, well telecommunications would be best, like which phone service? Maybe we've been into a business with this company for a long time, but we'd probably save a couple thousand dollars if we went with somebody else. Like how often are we reviewing those?
Well, I think it depends. Kim, do you want to talk about this? Because like I think, you know, like when you're talking about large contracts like transportation, like when, when the contract is up, you know, we usually do an RFP so that we can determine if that's still the best deal for the district. And usually, it usually is still the, the best deal for the district, but maybe it's not. I mean, it's, it's a good thing to, you know, I just reviewed a bunch of RFP information from the transportation bid from 2022, and the bids were vastly different. So, I mean, it's good to get three bids on different things. And I think that that's the prudent way to do it. And, you know, sometimes you can't get three bids, right? So like occasionally you'll have, like, I had, just did a radio purchase in my old district. And the, the lowest bid like wouldn't reach Evergreen or Prattum. It wouldn't reach one of those outline, we had an outline building like that that's kind of far out of the district, or Silvercrest, or, you know, any of those further out buildings. The radio wouldn't reach that building. And so the next bid up, the radio would reach all buildings. And so because of that exception to the, it doesn't give us the full service we need, we can use the next bid up. So there are parameters within the bidding process that allow, you don't always have to go with the low bid. You know, if the low bid is like not comparable or not serviceable or doesn't work for the district, then you can actually go to the next one up. But you just have to justify that. So I had to write a letter to the COPS grant saying, hey, this is why I cannot use the low bid. Because it just doesn't work for us, it doesn't give us what we need. And so there, there are lots of, like, I mean, sometimes I'll come and explain something to you, probably and you'll go, oh, yeah, okay, I see why we have to use the next bid up. Sorry, it's a little bit more, you know, I'm always, I always do the research and try and get us the best deal possible if I'm in charge of it. Same way with facilities or maintenance or anyone else. I mean, anyone else getting these bids for services or goods, they're trying to get the lowest bid. Kim, you want to chime in?
Absolutely. So, you know, contracts definitely vary in the, in the duration and then in the process in which is required. So you're very familiar, you know, as a board, you just approved our, our latest RFP process, which was for the food services contract. That was, you know, that RFP was awarded and it is a one-year contract with the option for renewal up to four additional years. Same thing with our transportation RFP that was done in 2022. And different RFPs have to be done over time. But there's also a lot of additional methods available to public agencies through the Oregon Department of Administrative Services. That's where kind of a lot of the governing of public contracts comes from. So one of the very, very beneficial pieces to public agencies is, again, as I mentioned, the cooperative purchasing agreements where maybe Hillsborough School District went out and needed to get a, they did an RFP for, we'll call it computers, you know. And what they can do is write into that RFP that this RFP, the recipient or the, the company awarded the RFP also must make this same agreement available to other public agencies. So if you think about the, you know, there's a cost benefit analysis. An RFP takes hundreds of hours and a ton of time of a lot of staff, right? So when districts can come together and, you know, okay, we, one district put all the work in, but another district can, can be part of that cooperative agreement, that's one of the ways we review those contracts. We also rely on, again, going back to our directors, our department heads. I'm going to take technology for a perfect example. You know, unfortunately, computers are expensive, right? And we are one-to-one with our students. And so you have thousands of pieces of, you know, computers in this district. And, you know, you're constantly looking at how can we make this the most cost-effective way, but yet meet the needs of the students. So we, we are very cautious, our tech team is very cautious to think about, we want to make sure that we are not having to hire three additional technology staff just to save $50,000 on the devices because we may have such random different devices everywhere. The management cost of that is, is very, very high. So there is a lot of, we'd call it standardization throughout the district, trying to figure out, you know, not only what is the cost of the contract itself, but what's the cost of implementing or maintaining that? So that is a big piece, you know. So we, we constantly are reviewing those. The other piece is a lot of our contracts, we talked about, you know, say phone service. We are part of a program called E-Rate in which a portion of our phone service is actually credited to us through an E-Rate program if we use certain providers. And so that is a federal program that we participate in to get reduced utility costs. So there are countless pieces that are constantly being reviewed by the experts within each of our departments. And, you know, you, we really rely on this school district industry. There's such a partnership between, you know, between districts. And we are part of, you know, these industry work groups. Actually, I'm this week, you know, working with a business, our business statewide OASBO group. And, you know, you're talking to other districts and saying, oh, my goodness, that sounds phenomenal. Let's not reinvent the wheel and let's work off each other. So again, it's, contracts vary in the duration. I will absolutely say, yes, there are contracts that do need to be looked at because just because we have an AR that, you know, states you can do a renegotiation of existing contracts with incumbents. Maybe the incumbent, it's time to, you know, look at that fresh. So we absolutely are committed to doing that within the resources that we have available. Again, the, the time is, is really very, very difficult. But again, number one, being, being good stewards of the taxpayer dollar, that's, that's what we're here for, so.
Kim, I appreciate you touching on the, because that was a question I had as well, was the like secondary impacts of a contract, the implementation management.
Huge.
So it was a nice to hear you mention that that's a consideration.
That, that is actually, you know, it, it can be difficult to see, you know, and I'll just, I'll just put it out there. You know, we, our tech team has gone with Dell computers. They believe Dell provides the best value to the district. The actual upfront cost may be slightly higher per device. But when the keyboard goes bad, we can replace the keyboard, not throw it away, which is the case with many other brands. When we're trying to troubleshoot, we can troubleshoot 4,000 devices because they're all standardized versus, well, we have 1,000 of these and then we got a good deal on these 600 and then we got, so, you know, you, you, you sometimes look at it and say, wow, that'd be great to save, you know, $50,000. But if we have to add two staff and that's, say, $200,000 loaded, every year, that one-time $50,000 savings is completely negated.
Well, and the other thing to consider is that sometimes the state will do a contract for things. So you have other districts that, you know, you can swing in on their RFP. But also, like the state was talking about, doing a purchase for security and for check-in systems in, in buildings. You know, they were talking about all of those crisis alert management systems and panic alerts. And they were talking about doing it, a statewide contract, which gives districts a, a break in the price. And so if, if you can get in, if, they haven't done it yet. But if, if they did, that would be a cheaper way to go because they give the state a good deal. So sometimes the vendors sign up with the state too.
So then I guess my, my last question I have, and this is, I'm just a process guy, so I try to understand how things work. And then once I finally figure, like, ah, oh, I get it now. With, there, there's just, all this stuff is going to be done through the district office, all these policies. Because it's, I mean, this is, I guess, the state in the office, this is definitely an area of expertise that's relies to the business department. We recently had a purchase that was over $150,000 and we're trying to figure that out. I guess what I'm asking is, as a board, like how do we track this stuff? If, and how does it get reported to make sure we're following these rules?
We wouldn't know unless a superintendent tells us.
Okay.
I mean, there are some, there are some cross, so there's, there are some cross checks. So for instance, if your auditor caught an area where they're like, oh, like this should have had an RFP, this is a, this is a higher cost, like this should have had multiple bids. Or, I mean, there are, there are times when we can have a finding on our audit for that. So, I mean, there are cross checks, Josh, to look for things like that. I think that, I think it's really important to know that, I mean, it's, it's, I, that's why we're running the smaller purchases by you as well, so that you can kind of see what we're doing in the district, how we're supporting kids, what our programs do. And then just rest assured, if it's, if it's a large dollar amount, I'm going to bring it to you. And because all the curriculum purchase goes through me, yeah, there will be, there will be no purchases of that magnitude. Well, there won't be any this year anyway, but there'll be no purchases of that magnitude that I wouldn't bring to you, right? Because like if we decided to update language arts curriculum or something, that would be a huge process in the district. Like we would have teachers involved, we would, you know, you guys would come and look at curriculum. Like there would, there would be a huge process around that to find the perfect product for our teachers, right? Because we're trying to serve teachers at the district office. That's our job, is to support teachers and make sure they have the tools they need. I would never pick a curriculum in a vacuum, sign an invoice, and send it to Kim without running it by other people.
I was going to comment, that's one thing on your business of bringing the smaller amounts to us, I think that's going to be healthy for us also, just to see where, you know, we'll, we'll get the financials every month. But when we, oh, yeah, I remember that, that's why this drawed down and that sort of thing. And, you know, just give us a better feel of the financials and where it's going and everything. And it's not a, you're not bringing them to us for permission, you're bringing them to us for information.
Yeah, it's awareness.
Which is what we need, is do our job, so.
Yeah, the reason I asked that Superintendent Kelson was not any, it's just not wanting to maybe, I don't know how to word this correctly, just to make sure that we're catching the things that should probably be caught. This historically, not anything to do with you, I just want to do the best job possible going forward.
Yeah, I, I, so here, here, and you've seen the budget, right? So you know what's in the budget. Like this is going to be an ongoing conversation all year. Like we're going to be really transparent with you. Like when the enrollment rolls in, we're going to tell you, you know, whether it looks good or if, if we're scared about the kinders coming in. You know, when the September payroll goes on and we know, and Kim's like, okay, we look good, then I'm going to communicate that to you. You guys are going to be so sick of me, you're going to be like, this woman is just driving us crazy. But I think that just, you know, being really hyper-aware, I think we have to be really, just really careful with how we spend our dollars this year. And very mindful because we never want this to happen again, right? We want to make sure that our teachers have confidence in how we structure the budget. And Kim has done an amazing job. And I will tell you, from a superintendent's standpoint, I have not spent one extra dollar since I've been here. And I've saved a few, how like Kim? Yeah, so we're trying to save money and not spend it. And so, you know, we're working really hard to make sure we stay right on what we said, so. And there's, there's still, you know, there's still things in the works, you know. We, we may have a few equipment purchases that might help support our food service a, a little better. And when we do those, we'll run them by you and we'll tell you why. And you'll know exactly why that's needed in the district. We've got a, we've got a stove with one burner.
Oh, my gosh.
That doesn't work very well anywhere.
We heard about a stove, so we're going to have to fix that.
Anyone else have any questions about the procurement process?
No, I, I appreciate the increased transparency going above and beyond what you need to. So we'll look forward to that.
Yeah, thank you.
Much better than, haven't heard of that, so. Did you have anything else, Kim?
Okay, for, just, were you?
Either one. I'm good with either one if they have anymore. Kim, Kim? Kim Dowd?
Yeah, just want to let you guys know that we're, we're looking forward to it. You know, you guys, you're officially considered our local contract review board per board policy. And, you know, there's going to be things that are coming to you as our contract review board. It's our, you know, it's our job to make sure that nothing is encouraging favoritism, that all agent, you know, all entities have an opportunity to do business with the district and that, you know, we're doing, doing right by our taxpayers. So, you know, sometimes as, as we, you know, as Kim Kelson was saying and as we were explaining, sometimes the cheapest is not always the most economical over the long term. So, you know, it is hard sometimes to, to look at those. But, you know, as, as Kim was also just saying, you know, maybe having some investments in some material items upfront that could, you know, create more, greater efficiencies and savings down the road, that's, those are the things we, we're looking at. So appreciate your interest in it and willingness to listen to us all, so.
I'm sure all of us can speak to instances in our own private lives where we tried to save a dime and then we wished we'd ordered the one a step up and got it. So we ended up paying twice, et cetera, et cetera. So, Kim Kelson, did you have anything else to add?
No, I, I think that was a really great discussion. And I think, you know, as things come up, if, you know, if you ever have questions, feel free to reach out to Kim or I and we'll do our best to answer it. And, you know, I think following up this discussion with, you know, long-range facilities planning and some of those other things so that we start, you know, really considering what we're, what we need to focus on moving forward, I think will be an important step to this.
Okay, okay, thank you. Now on to superintendent evaluation process. This is, this is one of our main charges as a board. This is, this is one of our main charges as a board, uh, as far as our responsibility. As it gets often said, uh, superintendents are one employee. And we wanna make sure that the growth is happening there that benefits our district and that we're seeing the fit, et cetera, and evaluating that. We have on there two links, uh, to the workbook and then the, uh, considering, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to go through that, or if you've gone through that before, but I highly encourage everyone to go through that, evaluating the superintendent and read judicially, read through that, and see the sorts of things that we need to be considering and standards and goals like this. And the way, reason we got it on today's agenda is we, in our contract with Kim, we pushed it off till, uh, October for Kim to have her goals to us to present for the year. Uh, so she gets a little into things before it starts, cause normally it would've been September. But we, we pushed it off to October. And our part in that is the standards, and you'll see going through this from the workbook from OSBA, going through there, the standards that are, uh, that we want our superintendent to be up to in the different areas. And one thing we need to remember is this is, there needs to be standards. These are recommendations from, it's a cross-section between OSBA and COSA, working together on this, so it's pretty well vetted. But the point I wanna make is, if there's something there that in discussion between the board and superintendent, that we don't want in there, we can take it out. If there's something, on the other hand, that we think is missing, that would fit for our district and our situation, we can put it in there. In other words, it's a, it's a guideline, it's not a bible. And so, uh, uh, to go by, and that's why I really appreciate it if everybody could get a chance and, and go through that. And, uh, and maybe, I, I'm visioning, envisioning our workshop for August as part of that. Uh, maybe we, an assignment would be to come to it with, on the standards part. If there's anything you have questions about or would like to see Xed out, or if there's something in the standards section that you'd like to put in, so we can have a discussion around that, and what we put in there, uh, that fits for our situation. And then Kim will build her goals off the, how she's going to, uh, get somewhere in those standards, how she's gonna demonstrate that. And one piece that is really important for us to remember, and, uh, cause I've seen this missed before, these goals need to be, they will fit for our goals as a district. In other words, our strategic plan, all that, our goals for a district. But from the superintendent's part of it, goals, those goals mean written in such a way, of how they're going to facilitate that goal, how they're actively, in their position, gonna, gonna do that. And then, and then their indicators of, of how they would, uh, demonstrate those. And so I, it's just important that we have that process kinda figured out. And then, like I said, I'd like to have a discussion in, in the August workshop concerning the, uh, the standards, because the thing that we're gonna have the standards, the goals then, and so that can all be in place in October. Uh, and then our procedure, our ki- kinda calendar from that point on, and our reviews and this sort of thing, check-ins, and how, how we wanna do that. So, anybody have any comments, questions, thoughts?
I was gonna ask about the, and I'm glad you mentioned it at the end there, Phil, but the updated timeline. Um, one thing I think for the last few years, we tried to do is really make sure that we were more spot-on with our timing of everything, cause things can get lost in the shuffle and we've had a busy couple of years with, you know, labor relations and bond initiatives, that, you know, um, having that mapped-out process was always, was always helpful. Um, and I don't know if, if we wanna do it the same way this year, whereas the vice chair usually kinda was the steward of trying to help map out that process. But, um, you know, utilizing the one from the year, the year prior and kinda making a draft and then looking at our upcoming meetings, that was always super helpful to try to, try to map that out. But I, you know, I think the earlier we can get that done, if we can even have a draft at the August work session, I think that would be super helpful for, just making sure we stay on track for this year.
Yes, cause come September, there's all kinds of things start rising up.
Starts getting crazy.
Start getting in the way.
It's already crazy, I'm sorry.
Well, you'll have more people in your office that are crazy with you.
And, um, I'll probably be a broken record, but I think that, you know, we, we implemented the, um, targeted feedback survey from OSBA and then it wasn't, we weren't satisfied with that, um, outcome. But we don't have anything to replace that yet, and I think we need something to replace that. Um, because there are some things in the standards, whether, you know, and, and if we add or subtract.
Right.
But there are some things in those standards as written now that we don't have a clear vision of. And so we would need to gather data from other places. And so making that data valid and reliable, um, I think is the, that's the hard part.
Well, we talked at, uh, preliminary talks we had at agenda time, we were talking on this. And our thought was maybe, uh, some way of, and don't have the logistics of how, but, uh, surveying the people that are direct reporters to Kim, besides, besides us, but then direct reports.
Yeah.
I like that idea a lot.
Derek's idea, right? Cause, cause our last time with, the concern was, we were not getting any direct feedback from the, the secondary admin.
Yes, and that's the concern that I have too, like, i- i- and teachers are important too, but at first would be, to me, the principals.
Superintendent position.
Because they're the ones that directly work with the superintendent.
They're also gonna get a lot of the feedback from, from their teachers in their buildings, you know, that they can, they can gather and synthesize and bring themes within the standards, right, to, to us. I, I mean, I was thinking about this too the other day and like, maybe once we get those standards, you know, whether it be as-is or whether we adjust them a bit and get them set so Kim can craft her goals is, when we wanna do the targeted feedback on our own, I mean, can we do it as simple as a, a Google Doc?
I think so.
Or, or a Survey Monkey form, something along those lines that if we're saying, well, I think we're gonna send it all out, all to Kim's direct reports,
Right.
For, for their feedback, that way we can bring them back and gather the themes and gather the, the true feedback, especially in those ar- areas that are harder for us to see on that day-to-day basis, cause we're, we're not in the office every day, um, and working as closely as the admins are. I think we can be as simple as that. I think the biggest thing, to Jennifer's point, is making sure we're getting it to the right people.
Right.
And we're getting that feedback that we need.
So.
The other thing I had is I, I totally appreciate your comment, Phil, about what the, the goal is, what the superintendent is going to do.
Right.
I, I really appreciate that.
Right.
So, thank you for noticing that.
And, yeah, and it, uh, I mean, that, that position, that person, that's who's being evaluated, so what have they?
Yes.
Right, you have two, two parts of kind of the goals. You have the what, and you have the how, right? And that how is really the, the important piece that gets illustrated.
The, the only thing that, I, I, I agree with you, Aaron, I honestly think that we, with all the technologies that's out there, we can do it ourselves. We can find, there's, like signup genius is what I use for my volunteers, it's a free service, it's awesome.
Lots of vehicles.
There's, I'm sure we can come up with something ourselves to do a survey. The only concern I would have with it, with anything with statistics, is getting accurate data that Kim feels like,
Yes.
She's okay with the sample that we have, it feels reflected and not cherry-picked, to have data be one way or another. So I'd wanna make sure that she feels comfortable, how we do the process as well.
Yeah.
This is an unusual way to do the process, just to, I mean, I don't, I don't mind it, I'm confident in my abilities, but this isn't typical. I mean, typical is you guys formulate an evaluation based on this and, you know, and I, I evaluate myself. And then we go into executive session and we talk about, you know, things that I could do better, or things that I've done really well at. And then, you know, you, in open session, you kinda give a summary of what you came up with. The, I mean, I, I think it's good, I mean, I think it's good to take feedback from principals. I think that, you know, they'll, they'll tell you, um, what they really feel. Uh, and I think they'll probably reach out to you anyway, but I think that, um, how do I wanna say this? This is a very difficult job right now, and some of the decisions I'm having to make are really tough. And I'm, you know, I'm already getting chewed up on Facebook a little bit, um, from, from a, a decision that was within the budget, like, you know, replacing Dan Bush's position, that, that, you know, that was, that was something that was in the budget, that wasn't in addition to the budget. So, you know, I'm trying to be really, um, open with my communication, trying to let everybody know. But, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a difficult road this year. Um, and it's, you know, there's a lot of healing to do in the district and there's a lot of things that need to happen in the district. And some of those won't be easy.
And I think that that is something too, that we need to always realize, that you're never gonna be the number-one high-popularity person, because you, you can't, right?
Leaders take arrows.
And, and, I think it's really important, uh, for me, and I'm assuming for a lot of other people, that, like, we can't act when people just give us one-off information.
Yeah.
We have to have information that's available to all of us, and it needs to be valid and reliable. And, and that's the point that Josh is making too about, well, is this gonna be valid or reliable? I think the last survey we did, we didn't have enough people, and so then it's not, it's not fair, right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, we sent it out to principals, only got it from four, for example.
And, and so, I, I, I think I hear what you're saying, and I wa- I want you to hear, you know, that, that this is the why behind it, is because, you know, we, we've gotta have a little bit more information in order to act more quickly, I would say.
Well, and I think it goes on that transparency line, you know, we're trying to increase transparency too, you know, with, as much as we've been talking, like, specifically with you and Kim about the budget for our, for our public, we wanna try to intrigue, increase transparency within the process as much as we can to sh- to demonstrate to our public that we've done our job in evaluating our superintendent, right? Um, this is always hard because it's a personnel evaluation, and I understand that. Uh, it's very odd. But, but I think, um, I, I think it just hel- we're extremely, I think, um, uh, guarded isn't the right word, but we're very like, really like, look, we gotta get this right now, right? So, so we wanna increase transparency too.
But I also think that you need to feel assured.
Yeah.
Because I know we, I know we collectively feel this way, uh, so I'm just gonna say it publicly, uh, that we understand, we, that everything's not, did, you know, any one day may not come back roses, you know, from every administrator and everything, that's the way life is. But we're gonna have it all in perspective to our situation and, and this sort of thing. And then, of course, it's gonna be very weighted by, what, the seven of us? You know, our, our take on everything is, and as far as making go, but it, it's, uh, we're not collectively involved in the day-to-day. And so I, I, that's the value of us getting it from the direct reports. And I know it's not necessarily the norm, but it, uh, it does have a certain aspect to it, that, uh, it gives some credibility to it. And, you know, it's, you'd be surprised, uh, most, most, I'm not gonna say all, but most are gonna go the other way. It's just like when you're a teacher and let kids grade their own paper. They put a C on a paper, you would've put an A.
Yeah.
It kinda works that way.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's been my experiences, uh, involving similar time.
Request, um, uh, I'm, I, cause I don't see it here, I, I don't wanna do this open session. Like, I would like to do it traditionally, like, most performance reviews in executive session. I don't know if that's.
Kim's, Kim's decision.
It would be an executive session unless she'd like.
Okay.
Which wasn't the norm in the past, but it's generally an executive.
Okay.
We got a couple of thoughts, wanna jump in here. Um, I know maybe it hasn't been the norm, I think, um, it probably should be. Like, I think when you look at most performance eval- evaluations, it's really one-sided, it's, we're only seeing kind of our interactions with you. And so I think to have a more collective view, I think it is important for those direct reports to have, not necessarily input, but it's a blind spot that we as board members have, and so I think it'll be a more complete.
Yeah.
And I also think, like, the biggest piece, cause I was thinking about this kinda the last week, like, okay, what is, what does that, relationship look like for a direct report to give, you know, their boss feedback if it is? Uh, but if it's like specific and credible, and I think, um, like, if it's just a useless complaint, like, that's not really beneficial for us. We want, um, you know, no one's, not everyone's gonna agree with all your decisions, but if it's, um, you know, your rationale was explained and there was logic behind it, I think that's the, the part that we're looking for. Um, and then the other kinda piece I had too is, because we haven't necessarily done it before, there could be some apprehension by school administrators about wanting to participate in it for, hey, if I speak out counter to my direct supervisor, is there gonna be repercussions for that? So, uh, that's something we should consider as well, whether or not that'll limit our feedback, is there a way to do that anonymous?
Right.
And then, you know, very specific questions, where we're not just pulling out, but like, you know, with this decision, was this explained? What's the communication style? So very, I think, um, specific questions where we can kinda sift through if it's just a journal, like, oh, I didn't like because she did X.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was actually gonna recommend that, I was gonna say that you would get better responses from the admin team if they probably could do it anonymously.
Of course, of course.
For sure. To me, that's a given.
Yeah, and I just sent the teachers a, a survey on, uh, their experience, um, with some curriculum products last year, and they, a hundred twenty-four of them answered me and it was anonymous.
Great.
I got amazing feedback from them, like, and, and it was all staff, not just teachers, but it was, you know, I sent it to everybody. And the feedback on that survey is incredible, and the administrators are like, wow, like, you know, I mean, there's, they've shared things with us that they might not have if they hadn't been anonymous, and so it's really helpful, that part of it.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, we have to do, I think the, the feedback is definitely anonymous. You know, I, I just went through my mid, mid-year review a couple of weeks ago with, with my supervisor, with my job, and, you know, as part of ours, we always get stake, they always collect stakeholder feedback on us, right? From whoever I work with, and, you know, I don't have direct reports per se, but it's people that I interact with sometimes on a daily basis, or at least weekly basis, so I think, and, and I don't know who says what, right? I just see the, the comments they provide for me, whether it be positive or whether it be growth opportunities, right? So that's always helpful. So I was gonna say, the anonymous piece has to be key, because it's gonna give us a degree of greater feedback on actionable items, right? And I think we're all, you know, um, where, have the wherewithal enough to know what's a complaint? What's just somebody complaining versus what's, what's a good piece of actionable feedback, you know? Um, so I think when we see those ones that are like, ah, it's a complaint, okay, that's just gonna get tossed, right? Because it just, it's just somebody complaining. But, you know, looking across our admin team, the one, the ones that I know, or at least I've worked with almost every one of them, you know, and then some of the newer ones, but, uh, I think they're all gonna do a great job of making sure that you have actionable, we have actionable feedback pieces that we can help provide to you underneath the, again, the leadership imperatives and leadership qualities that, that have set forth here, so.
Yeah, and it might, it might be good, um, you know, in advance to get some feedback from them on what they, how they would like me, what goals they would like me to focus on. You know, that is, that is one of my questions when I meet with them in August, will be like, you know, what do you think I need to do to be successful? How do we move the district forward? Like, I have some really targeted questions to ask them, to get them to, you know, to share with me what their hopes and desires are. Like, you know, we have lots of things planned in August, and so, you know, those are really great conversations to have about, you know, where, where are we going? Because I have the least amount of information in the district, but I'm trying to pre-capture it quick, trying to capture it quickly, but, you know.
I'm hoping your goals are focused. I'm hoping your goals are focused and small in number this year, because.
It will have to be.
It's going to have to be, because there's just really, like, two key, couple of key focuses that we've talked about for this year, it's budget and getting everybody rallied together and heal and, and move forward.
Right.
So again, I, I'm preaching to the choir here, but I, I hope your goals are very small in number and targeted and focused.
Yeah, I see them being around budget and communication.
Yeah.
To really, and to, to make people feel heard, seen and, and loved, you know, cared for in the building, I think that's going to be important.
Just want to go back to some Aaron mentioned earlier, I'm good with working on that timeline, I'll probably look at last year's.
Yeah, and I'm glad, if you have any, need any feedback, I'm glad to help with that.
I'll get that ready and for our August meeting.
Yep.
I just have this other thought I want to kind of throw out, when I was looking at the, the workbook and some of the standards, it talks about additional goals and it's not, I haven't been able to put this goal necessarily in a specific articulable measurable language yet, but this idea of stabilization of the district, and I think we kind of mentioned that, like, the budget, and so that just keeps going in my head, is this theme of stabilization, I think we've started that process, but continuing with that, and so, you know, when we look at the standards and individual goals, I think those are some that will get pulled out, because I think this next year, as people return back, there's going to be a significant amount of just angst, and like, what does this year look like? Less resources, less personnel, okay, the budget's okay, and so I think just that stabilizing, like, it's going to be okay, it's going to be different, but, so it's just a thought as we kind of work through the, the goals and standards.
Well, and the, you know, kind of, they kind of come together, I mean, all this does, obviously, it all comes together for a district, but your stabilization, I like that wording, stabilization, but the culture of trust, you can give feedback, you can give ideas, know not everything's going to go your way, but you can suggest and won't lose a bardy part or anything, you know, things are going to be good, and how they kind of go together, that stabilization and a culture of, of, of safety, I guess, is something like that. So, okay. Okay, so we'll plan on it, you know, I'm sure there'll be a couple of other things we need to have on there too, but that we will be doing some, some of our preliminary work on this for the evaluation process, so we're ready to go, because October will be a big date as far as accepting the goals and all that, so we're all ready for that. Anybody else have any thoughts or anything they want to share along those lines?
Just a reminder that we do have the Excel spreadsheet with the standards in it, and of course, if we change the standards, we would need to change that, but that has been a tool that I hope we'll consider using in the future, and so I think that.
Yeah, that's pretty easy to fill out and everything.
Yeah, so we, when we have our, when we feel like we're ready to approve something, we'll approve that timeline and then whatever standards.
But if we do decide to move anything in or out, that's a pretty easy process on that, so.
Yep.
And, and maybe, and chances are, we'll probably leave it fairly status quo, but just nonetheless, we, the district deserves and Kim deserves for us to look through and really give thought into those things.
Totally agree.
So, Kim, did you have any more input you'd like us to hear on any of this?
No, I, I don't think so, I'm, you know, I know you want to take a deeper look at this, a deeper dive of the direct reports, and that makes sense to me and that doesn't really make me nervous, I, I do my best to try and support my administrator friends and I think, you know, we're, we're off to a good start. I will say that I will try and see if I can, I did kind of dig around a little bit to see if there were any other alternate surveys out for that, never really found anything great yet, but I'll keep digging around and I could check with Krista and see if she has anything.
Well, the other question that I have around that is, we used to have the Oregon Tell survey.
Right.
Which was really great.
Yeah.
And I heard there was going to be a replacement for that?
I think that's being renewed.
Okay.
I heard that was back in action for this year, and I know, I mean, there's, we have access to the youth truth survey, which, but that's not really, that's really about the superintendent, but that is for staff and students.
Well, it could be evidence for culture, I think, in one of the, one of those stand, standards, but.
Yeah, as long as you had a baseline for it, so if, I mean, if you're using a, a large-scale survey, survey like that and you don't have a baseline, this is not, I mean, you can take baseline this year and then do it next year.
Got it, you're right, you're right. And we don't need to move too quickly, I think that, I mean, the, just the direct reports is not necessarily where it ends, right?
No.
We, the, the targeted feedback survey had teachers, it had community members, because they were about, we connected it to standards that it was difficult for us to, to see the full picture, and so I think that's important to keep in mind.
Yeah, it's important, but I also think we don't want to venture too far from ones that really do have direct.
Yes.
Knowledge.
I totally agree.
And I, I think that's important for our superintendent, that that be the case, and so.
Absolutely.
So that's where I like to, that's where I do as a direct report sort of thing.
I will add one more thing about a, a survey that I think gives a really great picture of culture and climate within a building, which is the I R R E survey, and that is the survey that the Ford Family Foundation pays for, for school districts in Douglas County. So I don't know what it costs, because we never had to pay for it, but like, you could see the trajectory, like, like we had a question on there, do you feel like professional development in your building is geared towards your classroom instruction, and like, their line was like going up like this. And so, you know, the teacher satisfaction, like, you could really, like, you, you could see it in there, it was really obvious. And then, you know, like, if you looked at other areas, you could see places where you needed to improve, that's a really great survey. Of course, if it costs money, that's, that's not a, a great option at this point, but it might be something to think about adding in the future, because it does give you good data, actionable data as administrators.
What was the name of the survey again, I'm sorry?
I R R E. I wish I knew, remembered what the acronyms stood for.
Oh, no, I wasn't going to quiz you on here.
I'll send you a link, I've got it somewhere, sorry, too many acronyms.
No, no worries. Anything else for the good of the order?
Oh, yeah, one last thing, sorry. We ended up not doing, not enacting the plan, but we did last year have the plan to have former board chair Jonathan Edmonds come and moderate our final kind of.
He helped us do the, with one voice, speak with one voice, pull the themes together.
Yeah, speak with one voice, because it's really, because I, and, and Phil, you might feel differently, but I felt like my voice needed to be heard and I couldn't act as the, the, a neutral moderator and have my voice heard at the same time, and so that's just something to consider.
For the compilation of the findings from us.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, we got a little time on that.
Yes, yeah, I just wanted to put that out there in case people were thinking about it.
So, anything else? Okay, earned.